Okay, good morning. I understand that we have our quorum. Thank you all very much for coming and being so timely. I hereby call to order the Town of Carlisle Special Town Meeting of October 17th, 2020. Good morning, I'm Rain Davis, your Town Moderator. As I said in June, and I'm sure many of you were here in June, we are gathered here in most unusual times. We're doing some things differently than we usually do, primarily to keep everyone safe and to move the meeting along as quickly as we can while still preserving town meeting's important deliberative role as the legislative body of the town. As I also did in June, I'm going to change things around and rather than waiting to the end to say thank you, I think it's so important to recognize the people who have helped get us here, so I'd like to start with our thank yous. First, thanks to all of you for coming and supplying a quorum. Thank you in particular on behalf of all of your fellow citizens who aren't here. Thank you for coming to take care of the town business. I presume they are grateful to you for that. I'd also like to thank the members of our police and fire departments who are here to keep you safe, and particularly to Fire Chief Soros and Police Chief Fisher, who have been advising me for months now on how to try to get things done safely. And in particular, let me give a shout out to Chief Fisher, who assured me that the Carlisle citizens are a hardy bunch and would not be deterred by a little bit of rain and wind. He was right. Also, a big thanks to Carlisle's facilities manager, Rob Fertado, and his crew, including Rich Price and Danny Sullivan, who have handled the setup here in these challenging conditions, as well as John Dorshuk and his crew from Terry Hanley Audio, as well as Minuteman Media, who, while the sun is shining now, they've had to contend with rain over the last 24 hours and how to get things set up, and I very much appreciate their efforts. Also, to the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, who have been wrestling literally for six months now, or more since March, on how to make the best decisions for the town's affairs and to prepare the proposals for you to consider today. I'd also like to thank and recognize our Town Administrator, Tim Goddard, who's sitting over here, for ably guiding the warrant process forward, as he always does, and keeping everyone well coordinated. And last, and certainly not least, a very special shout out to our Town Clerk Peggy Wang and her crew of registrar volunteers. Not only have they come out here to, in this raw weather, to check you in, but they are doing triple duty, handling the early voting that starts this afternoon at 2:00 p.m. in Town Hall, as well as what I'm sure is a flood of mail-in ballots. So it's a particularly stressful time, but a critical time for what Peggy and her folks do, so thank you very much. And again, thanks to all of you, really, that I've named, or not named, no matter how challenged our democracy may feel at times at the national level, it's all of you who are keeping it alive well and vibrant here locally. And any of you who have studied American history from the 1600s and 1700s, I think, would recognize that it was democracy at the local level that really provided the foundations for a republic, which I hope will be strengthened in the years ahead. Okay, to the housekeeping now. I've inspected the return of service of the warrant and determined it has been properly served. I will assume the consent of the meeting to waive the reading of the warrant. Yes, okay, hearing no objection, the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. Restrooms can just go up into the Spalding Building if you need them. A member of the school staff will let you in. I hope we'll be able to go along quickly enough that people won't need that. Moving around, we ask that you please stay in your seats unless you really do need to use the restroom or you intend to leave. Otherwise, please keep your social distance, which everyone now really knows how to do. In terms of speaking, if you wish to be recognized to speak, please wave your voting card in the air until I see you. And if you have to shout out, wait a few seconds before shouting out, but if you need to, my glasses may fog when I put the mask back on, so I may miss seeing you. If you do need, if I've overlooked you, please just say, "Mr. Moderator," as loudly as you can through your face mask. And then in terms of the face masks, obviously, please do keep them on at all times, except when speaking. When I do recognize you to speak, one of the EMTs will come by and carry the remote mic to you, so you don't need to be moving around. As always, please remember to speak civilly and respectfully. I hope you've picked up the town meeting motions on the way in, so that we can move along quickly. The time limits, normally we do eight minutes for presentations, three minutes for speaking from the floor, I think, with the exception of the budget, which obviously takes a little bit longer. I think all of the motion presentations will be relatively abbreviated. If you're speaking from the floor, please try to keep it to two minutes if you can, but if you need to go to three, that'll be okay. But I trust everyone's brevity. Voting, again, unfortunately, I know, we have some big fans of shouting out yay or nay, but please, let's just use the voting cards today. Non-voters are typically, are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. Typically, we do hear from non-voters, who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town. Unless there is objection, I will assume the consent of the meeting to hear from the following: non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional committees or task forces, non-voter employees of the Town of Carlisle, including the Carlisle Public Schools, non-voter management employees of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District and Town Council, and with permission to those people to speak to topics limited and relevant to their official capacity with the town. Is there any objection? Okay, well, I guess everyone else needs to hold on to their voting cards. Thank you. Actually, that was just a prop. I'll hold up my folder when I need it. So, is there any objection to allowing non-voters to speak under those limited circumstances? Seeing no objection, I assume the consent of the meeting. Now that we've covered speaking, just about listening, if anything interferes with your ability to hear, see, or otherwise participate in the proceedings, you may interrupt the meeting with a point of privilege to request that we rectify the situation. Also, if anyone needs one of the, oh, thank you very much, appreciate that. If anyone does need the special headsets that allow for amplification of sound, they are available in the trailer back there, and feel free to either go back there or wave down one of the EMTs and they'll bring it to you. And again, with the voting, I'll ask that you use the voting cards. Any questions about any of the procedures? Okay, let us begin. Article one is, was proposed for prior year bills. I understand that there will be no motion made under that article, is that correct? Okay, no motion being made, we will move on to Article two. On behalf of Jim Dar, of the Finance Committee, I will move that the town vote to amend the town's operating budget for the fiscal year 2021, beginning July 1, 2020, as adopted under Article 11 of the annual Town Meeting on June 2020, as provided below, I'm sorry, as provided in the Town Meeting motions handout that you have. So that motion is made for the motion as printed in the handout. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. I recognize Mr. Dar to speak to the motion.
Right here. I'm not going to do it with my mask on.
Yes, it's fine to take your mask off.
Thank you. Can people hear me? This is a little weird. Well, this is actually, this revised budget is the fourth version of the fiscal '21 budget that the Finance Committee has done this year. Our process began almost exactly one year ago, in what looked to be a normal process, meeting with departments, meeting with the Select Board, reviewing, until we got to February, and we had a proposed fiscal '21 budget. And of course, we know what happened then, and in the midst of the deep lockdown and equally deep uncertainty, we then went back and asked all the departments to come and tell us what the impact would be of an across-the-board 5% cut. So we went through that process, number two. Then, when the Select Board decided to hold a town meeting in June, we felt at that point we didn't have enough evidence to do that more draconian cut. So we then proposed, and you approved, a budget that was flat to fiscal '20. And now, we're coming back to revise that budget, but we're not changing the bottom line. Now, this is our fourth version. Every year, when we put together and work on the budget, it's a challenge in Carlisle. You all expect legitimately high-quality services, and yet costs continue to get pushed upwards every year by things like health insurance and contracts that are negotiated, and we also don't have much growth in revenue beyond the 2.5%. Obviously, there's almost no commerce. So every year, it's a challenge to balance those factors, and that will be true forever. This year, of course, was a lot harder to balance all those unknowns that we've all been living with. Some things, you know, in June, Victor talked about all the uncertainties and the unknowns. Some things have gotten a bit better. The state has agreed to commit to equal-level funding in Chapter 70 for the schools and municipal funding. We are seeing that the wisdom cares money, there's some ability to get some of that money in. The schools are open, for the most part. You know, some things have stabilized, and yet at the same time, unemployment, even in Carlisle, remains unusually high. We know that the state is facing a really substantial budget deficit this year and probably next year, and COVID-19 cases are rising. So our approach to the revised budget was one of continued caution. I would say acute sense of caution. However, we did revise the budget, and in doing so, we increased certain costs, about $360,000 of additional cost for mainly personnel items, cost of living increases, negotiated legally binding contracts, a few key positions the Select Board felt needed to be augmented. And we've paid for that by first, taking advantage of a one-time reduction in our expense at the high school because of a slightly smaller share of the population coming from Carlisle. That's about 220,000. And then we reduced our annual contribution to OPEB, a famous acronym, by about 140,000. Other post-employment benefits comprise a very significant long-term liability for the town, but we felt that this year, we could more or less reduce that significantly in the interest of a flat budget, because we also, every year, we do pay the current cost for retirees out of the operating budget, so there's no risk in that way. We're also proposing that $475,000 of free cash go to pay for the warrant article for capital items and also for the facilities warrant article. Free cash, you may know, is an accumulating reserve as a result of appropriated funds year by year that are not spent, and also a consequence of some unexpected revenues that come in during the course of the year, and that fund builds up over time. Right now, it's at about $2.7 million, as approved by the state last year. We also have a stabilization fund of a little over $1.1 million. Together, those things comprise our sort of liquid reserves in case of need. The Finance Committee has had a long-term policy of keeping the free cash and the stabilization fund at between 10% and 12% of the operating budget. If we take $475,000 for these one-time costs like capital items, that'll leave us at 11%, smack in the middle of the desired range. Where does all this leave us in terms of taxes? Well, we're hoping it leaves us in a pretty stable position. We are not asking for more tax revenue than last year. Every year, under Prop 2.5, the permitted levy or taxation can go up 2.5%, and also can go up based on new properties that come on the tax rolls. But this year, as a result of the fact we're not asking for more money, when you take the $30.7 million budget that you've seen in the warrant, and you subtract state aid as well as local receipts, things like excise payments, we end up needing about $28.6 million of tax revenue. With that, the so-called excess levy capacity, that is the legal, under 2.5, ability to tax, that excess capacity would rise by over $1 million to $3 million. You might think of that as a kind of hibernating reserve, something that's out there, it's there for future tax increases that may be needed in years when there's less uncertainty, and also for a true emergency. So our excess levy capacity goes up, the request for actual taxation stays the same. We hope that's stable for most of you, but this has also been a property revaluation year, and those revaluations will kick in in 2021. That may affect some of you differently from others, but our hope is that overall, it'll be stable. So now we're about to embark on the fiscal '22 budget process. We really don't know what that portends for us. I think our view of things is that we're not back to normal, there's a lot we don't know, many experts think that fiscal '22 and even '23 are going to be very difficult. So that's why we come back and say we don't want to increase the budget. We think that what we're proposing is a reasonable balance between the quality of service that residents expect and deserve and the need to be ready for the unknown.
Thank you. So the FinCom unanimously supported this article by five to zero vote, as did the Selectmen by five to zero vote. Were there any recommendations from any other town boards or committees? None. Okay, so the way we handle the budget discussion, I will quickly read through the major line items. If anyone would like to speak or hold a separate vote on one of the line items, and when I say line items, I'm talking about the ones that are in bold, so the large categories, so to speak, just shout out "hold" and we'll come back after I read through the list and have a discussion about that. So first is general government with the amended number of $1,074,769. Any holds on that? Protection of persons and property at an amended amount of $3,188,2. Public works, $1,225,24. Health and human services at $363,103. Any holds or questions on that? Culture and recreation at $841,636. Insurance and fringe benefits, $2,982,021. A hold on the insurance and fringe, okay. Unclassified, $302,000. Hold on that, no holds on that, and finally, debt at $1,344,640. Okay, so we had a hold on the insurance and fringe. I'm guessing behind the mask, that's Mr. Stevenson? I've got it right?
Doug Stevenson, 271 Cross Street. First of all, I want to applaud the Finance Committee for level funding the overall budget. I'm sure many folks are very pleased to see that. I just did have a question on the OPEB number, because a number of years ago, we made a serious commitment to fund our OPEB liability, and under the concern that our bond rating and other things would be affected if we didn't effectively fund it. So just a question, I guess, to the Finance Committee, what's the current balance of the OPEB trust, and are we jeopardizing our bond rating or any other financial circumstances by not continuing the funding of that as we have been?
Thank you. Mr. Dar, do you want to speak to that, or one of the other members?
Our Finance Director, Kim Kane, is here. She may know the balance in the fund right now. We have been, created the fund a few years ago, the trust, and we have been putting money into it. I would say, though, that our bond rating has not been imperiled in the past or now by our contributions to OPEB. And furthermore, the indications from the rating agencies over these past six or eight months is they're pretty much ignoring it statewide. So they realize that, you know, we're in unique times, and they're tolerant of this. We are still putting some money into it, and we'll need to do it in the future. So it's the committee's view that, you know, we're going to get back to it. It's just right now, we felt that was one place where we could make a reduction in favor of the bottom line.
Thank you. Ms. Kane?
Thank you. The balance of the OPEB trust right now is approximately $1.9 million. And we recently, just this last week, got our official statement redone for borrowing, and we have the AA1 rating, which is an excellent rating. That did not change. The Town of Carlisle has great reserves. It's also understood a lot of towns are reducing some of the OPEB this year due to the uncertainty of what's going on, but it is still being funded, and we're in a good position, because we just did a trust, so that reduced our liability by about $4 million. So it's not affecting us right now. Like I said last week, we just had our official statement, and our bond rating redone to a AA1, and we're in a good situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on the budget? Okay. Well, I guess we are ready for a vote. We are voting on the amended budget with the bottom line of $30,699,630. All those in favor, this is a majority vote, please hold up your cards. Any opposed? Do I see any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. We are on to Article three, Special Appropriations, on behalf of Dr. Lewis. I move Article three as printed in the warrant and motions handout. Is there a second? Dr. Lewis? Oh, I'm sorry. Is someone else going to speak to it? Okay, I recognize the Town Finance Director, Ms. Kane. Explain Article three.
Article three is for any other consulting that we need outside of the scope of what the accountant or the treasurer might actually be reporting. And sometimes, within our budget, we don't have that, other than certain auditing services that they provide for us. So sometimes with the fixed assets or a certain situation, I'll come up with the state that we need to pull in their services for, so that's what this is for.
Thank you. Article three, sorry, didn't mean to muffle myself. Article three was unanimously supported by the FinCom, recommended to you, a vote of five to zero, and the Selectmen also unanimously support this by a vote of five to zero. Any other town boards or committees have a recommendation? Seeing none, we can move on to the debate. Is anyone who should be recognized on Article three? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of Article three as printed in the warrant and motions handout. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. On to Article four, on behalf of Alvin Lewis. I move Article four as printed in the warrant and motions handout. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Kane, do you want to speak to Article four, please?
Prior to the Modernization Act, any premiums you received would have to be put into a special fund after the costs of that borrowing was taken out. Now, a lot of the banks, in fact, we're going for a borrowing now, will give you a very large premium. So your interest, say on a $4 million bond, could be at 5%, and you'd pay approximately like $800,000. The banks will offer you now a premium of anywhere from $50,000 to $500,000. So what you do is you use that bond premium to reduce the amount of the loan. So if you received a $500,000 premium, you could reduce that loan to $3.5 million. Therefore, your actual interest would only be about 1%, and you'd pay the difference. If you don't vote this, that premium has to be put in a separate fund. So the idea is, when these banks give you those large premiums, you reduce the cost of the note, therefore paying a reduced interest amount.
So the premium is coming back to us, it's not something we pay?
No, it's not something you pay. So if they give you an interest rate of, like I said, $800,000, and if they give you a premium, they're actually giving you back $500,000 or $300,000, whatever that premium is. And then you use that to reduce the note, therefore your interest paid would be less. If you don't vote this, then you pay the full $8 million, you put the premium that was given to you as cash in a separate fund, and then you'd have to go back and vote it out to a special project of equal term.
Okay, great, thank you. So, motion four, FinCom unanimously supports this article by five to zero vote, as did the Selectmen. Any other town boards or committees have a recommendation? Any debate on Article four? Seeing none, we're ready to move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Any opposed, please raise your voting cards. Okay, motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article five is a capital equipment motion to transfer $175,000 from free cash into capital items. The motion areas, I move, on which I'm making on behalf of Scott Triola. I move that the town vote transfer the sum of $175,000 from the undesignated fund balance free cash to fund the three capital items printed in the warrant and the table below in the motions handout. Is there a second for this? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Triola?
So very briefly, capital items are quote-unquote "one-time purchases" that fall outside of the operating budget. So we present these in a separate warrant or separate article, and recently, we've been also breaking out additional items such as municipal facilities as their own warrant articles. So in this article, we're looking at essentially one-time purchases in excess of $10,000. We did not bring this article to town meeting in June. Uh, we did not bring this article to town meeting in June, which we typically bring in April. So, uh, this committee looked, followed a parallel process to the Finance Committee, and we had a recommendation that, that we were working towards in February. This is a narrowed-down list of that. We really kept these items to what we felt were requirements for this fiscal year that couldn't be put off until next fiscal year. So, in the end, we ended up with, with the three items you see listed here. I'd be happy to answer questions about any of them. Um, but typically, in a typical year, this, this article might be closer to three or four hundred thousand dollars. So, we've really taken a conservative view of these items, and we're really recommending the ones that we think are essential to the operations this year. And again, this would be funded out of free cash, um, as Jim mentioned earlier.
Thank you. So, the, um, recommendations, recommendations on Article Five, uh, FinCom unanimously supported by a vote of five to zero, as did the Board of Selectmen. And I presume, what was the vote with the Long-Term Caps Committee? Unanimously in support. Any other boards or committees with a recommendation on this? Okay, um, any debate? The floor is open for debate or questions? Anything on Article Five, capital equipment? Okay, seeing none, we're ready to vote. Oh, I'm sorry? Okay, I recognize whoever that is bundled up in the back. Please identify yourself, you can remove your mask.
Lana Zamaro, three ninety-eight Bull Street. I'm just, this is a question. Uh, I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration on the part of the town with regard to, um, changing the fleet to electric vehicles? That is something that is kind of sweeping the country, um, and is just gonna increase. And I'm, it's just a question to see if that's ever, uh, been brought up for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Triola, if you could answer that?
I defer to Chief Fisher on this, but this has been discussed, and we have in the past looked at the option of buying electric police vehicles, and for a variety of reasons, the decision has been made not to do that. But every year, it does come up, and it is discussed, and usually, um, again, Chief Fisher can provide more explanation about why an electric police vehicle at the current time doesn't meet the needs of the, needs of the town, but obviously, the technology's evolving, and we're always looking at that, yes.
Okay, I, I recognize Ms. Zamaro for a follow-up question?
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, I would be interested in understanding the reasons why, and I can take that up, I guess, with Chief Fisher. Uh, I'd also just like to mention that this also applies to heavy-duty vehicles. For example, the DPW truck, there's a memorandum of understanding regionally around moving, uh, heavy vehicles off of fossil fuels and into, uh, electric, uh, energy.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? We have one, do you have one over here? Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Chief Fisher, if you... Uh, i- if you could just, uh, briefly, uh, address the question, thank you.
Briefly, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, it's funny, we were in a conversation just a few weeks ago with a, a fleet committee that I stay in contact with. They're not quite there yet for a pursuit-rated electric vehicle. LAPD, a few of the other big ones, um, have Tesla vehicles right now, they're testing. I get this question a lot, uh, trying to keep my finger on the pulse of this. I recognize it's important to our town. Clearly, the performance is there on the vehicles. There's, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. If you wanted a super-fast police car, electric's the way to go. But right now, for pursuit-rated, for the ins and outs and the day-to-day stuff, we're not, we're not quite there yet. So, some of the infrastructure that goes along with it, as well as some of the tests. But, uh, you know, I do subscribe to some things, and a minute, and a talking group, and a work group about that. Uh, thank you for the question.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, uh, we are ready to vote on Article Five, uh, capital equipment, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar appropriation. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your voting card. Any opposed? I see, okay, so, motion carries by a majority, but not, um, unanimous, and I so declare. Um, on to Article Six, uh, Municipal Facilities, on behalf of, uh, Mr. Lerman. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance free cash for facilities maintenance and improvement projects at the Town Hall, Police Station, Fire Station, Gleason Library, Highland Building, First Religious Society, Clock Tower Only, and Department of Public Works Facilities, all of which projects are to be determined by the Municipal Facilities Committee and approved by the Board of Selectmen and are expected to be completed by June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Is there a second for that? Motion has been made and seconded. I recognize Mr. Lerman to speak to it.
Thank you. Um, the Municipal Facilities Committee has identified, um, about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of projects that we wanted to initiate in this coming year. Um, in consultation with the Finance Committee, and because of the, the constraints of our current fiscal situation, um, we've agreed to an amount of three hundred thousand dollars. The projects that we're looking at are things like replacing the rooftop unit and the roof at Town Hall, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Replacing the chiller unit at the library, which has been failing for many years, that would be about eighty thousand dollars. Um, doing a substantial amount of roofing work at the Gleason Library to, um, deal with various water infiltration problems they have. Fixing the, um, code violations in the ductwork at the police station, that would be about a hundred thousand dollars. And various other smaller projects. Um, so obviously, our challenge for the coming year will be to identify which of those projects we can actually accomplish with the three hundred thousand dollars that we have to work with. And that will depend to some extent on, on whether some of the things, um, we can nurse along for another year and try to address them in the following fiscal year. So, I would urge you to support this warrant article so that we can continue to address the ongoing maintenance problems with the various town buildings. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, FinCom unanimously supported this article, five to zero vote, as did the Board of Selectmen, by a vote of five to zero. Uh, recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Uh, the mun- Municipal Facilities Committee presumably recommends this. Uh, any other town boards or committees? Okay, um, any debate or questions on Article Six? Uh, yes, over here?
Abby Zimmerman, Sunset Road. Um, I just see the Highland Building in here, and as a resident, I would want the committee to know that I really don't think we, as a town, should spend any money on that building until we can figure out what to do with it. It's been a sinkhole of money, and it's just, it's very distressing to keep seeing it showing up until we have a solution. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, it looks like we are ready for a vote? Is that correct? Okay, so, we are voting on Article Six, um, which is, uh, transfer of three hundred thousand dollars from free cash for facilities maintenance. All those in favor, please, uh, indicate by raising your voting card. Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article Seven is the CPA article. Uh, as, uh, we're, we're handling this somewhat similarly to we, to the way we've done it in the past, but with also a little bit of a difference, uh, which I'll explain when we get to Motion Two. The CPA, the, the Community Preservation Act, uh, annual recommendations, uh, typically, we have, we divide it up. First, there is a, uh, vote on the appropriations, which is to take the money, uh, that has come in and, uh, allocate it to the different, um, different funds that are set up under the Community Preservation Act. And then typically, we vote separately on particular appropriations, um, to take money out of those funds. Uh, so, the first motion, however, is for the CPA appropriation. Uh, so, on behalf of Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Askalillo, I move Motion One under Article Seven as printed in the motions handout. Is there a second? I didn't let you second that one. Okay, Mr. Askalillo, would you please speak to Motion One?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so, the, I think I'm resonating, but I speak loud. Um, so, it's higher than it usually is. You want me to say, oh, we're going in there, okay. Uh, it's slightly higher than it usually is, so each of the buckets is getting about twelve or thirteen percent, uh, because we were a little light last year, so that's why it's, it's sixty-five-five in each of those. And then, um, the administrative expenses, typically, when CPA does a study or a survey, um, the, the council has recommended that we pull those out of administrative funds. So, we will vote on that, so that will be part of Motion Two. Um, but, but that's why the, that line item is higher, that's why it's twenty thousand, as opposed to the typical five. Yeah, so, budget.
Okay, um, and on Motion One, we had, um, recommendations, I'm sorry, it's tough getting the pages apart here. Did we have recommendations from anyone? We don't have them printed here. Board of Selectmen, is there a recommendation on Motion One? Oh, page eight, okay, I'm sorry, that was... Okay, um, yes, I'm sorry, um, so, we had, um, Motion One was, actually, all three motions, so we'll just cover it once, were, um, supported unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. FinCom does not take a position on Motion One. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Obviously, the Community Preservation Committee, um, recommends this one. Any others? Okay, um, floor is open for debate or questions on Motion One, the CPA appropriations. Over here, please.
Hello, Hattie Shelberg, School Street. I'm just wondering why FinCom does not take a position on the first two motions?
Good, good question. Uh, if we can have FinCom address that, please?
Traditionally, we have not taken positions on any CPA warrant motions because the CPA, in our view, is outside of our purview. And, you know, as a result, we, we have made, in the past, you may remember, if you've been coming to these meetings for some years, at one point, um, we suggested changing the CPA tax. But, other than that, we have, we have never thought we should take a position. Don't have any control over that.
Thank you. And then, of course, we'll give you the opportunity on Motion Three to explain the exception to your practice. Okay, any other, uh, questions or comments on Motion One? Okay, seeing none, we're ready to, uh, take a vote on Motion One as printed in the, uh, handout. All in favor, please raise your voting cards. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Uh, we now, uh, move on to Motion Two. I will move the motion and then explain, uh, what we're doing. So, I move the motion, uh, on behalf of Mr. Askalillo, I move Motion Two as printed, um, in the motion handout. And that includes, uh, the sub, uh, subparagaphs of A, B, and C. However, there is no motion under, um, paragraph D, which had been, uh, A D had been listed in the warrant, but no, uh, motion is happening under D. Uh, is there a second to that? So, a motion has been made and seconded. Okay, so, um, we're doing things here a little bit differently than we have done in the, the past. Typically, it has been the practice in Carlisle, um, that each of the separate recommendations made by the Community Preservation Committee, uh, is presented, debated, and voted separately. So, if we have four, or five, or six particular appropriations recommended by the committee, each one has, in the past, been handled separately. Uh, for purposes of expediency today, we, uh, we've decided to bundle them. And, uh, what we will do, um, at, um, uh, after we hear the presentation, is I'll handle it like we do the budget. I'll just quickly run through and ask if there is a hold on A, B, or C. You then have the opportunity to ask for a hold, um, for, uh, either purposes of separate debate, or if you would like to ask for a separate vote on one of these sub-motions, uh, you may do that, um, and we will vote separately. Okay? Does everyone understand that? Okay? Uh, the other thing, I would just remind you that under state law, uh, the CP, CPA appropriations are a little bit different than others. You may not move to amend, so if you want to change, uh, uh, ten thousand dollars to five thousand dollars or something like that, you can't do that. All you can do is vote yay or nay. So, if you're opposed to the particular number, you have, you're opposed to the entire motion. Uh, I'm sorry, the, that particular appropriation, I should say. Okay, uh, with that, let me recognize Mr. Askalillo to, uh, explain what we have going on substantive here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the, the first one is the ten thousand dollars that, uh, we put into the administrative funds. So, that's to do a new survey, uh, study of the town center. So, it's been a number of years since the last one was done. Um, and as we can see, the town center is continuously changing, and it's one of the, um, most historic areas in town, so the Historical Commission asked, uh, to have some funds to, to do that. B is, uh, sixteen thousand dollars for the town clock. Uh, the cradle, I think it's called the cradle, cradle or crib. Underneath the clock is severely rotting, um, and, yeah, obviously, we want to fix that before it falls apart completely and damages the town clock. So, we're, we're at a point now where it's rotted in a number of places all the way through. Um, so, that's why that came before us. And then, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for the red brick building. So, the windows need to be replaced one way or the other. Um, the Historical Commission got involved because they wanted to preserve the historical look and, and the historical windows that date back to, I think, eighteen sixty-four. So, this is a, they're not gonna be updated to have, um, high-efficiency glass or anything, but the storm windows will stay on, so, uh, there, there will still be some efficiency. But it's basically, it's restoring the windows back to their original. They're gonna use to start, you know, the old glass and all of that stuff. So, it's, um, it's, it's really a historic project, as opposed to, um, a true replacement of windows.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, as we said before, the Board of Selectmen had recommended, um, by five zero, approval of Motion Two under, uh, Article Seven. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? None? Okay, um, so, let me, uh, just quickly, uh, go down and, and ask if there's a hold on any, any of these for either separate, uh, discussion or vote. So, Sub-Motion A, ten thousand dollars for the, um, uh, the study to be taken out of the Administrative Reserve Fund. Any hold on that? Seeing none. Sixteen thousand dollars, uh, for the town clock tower crib and cradle. I've been waiting for months to be able to say that. And then, finally, twenty-five thousand dollars from the Historic Reserve Fund. And then finally, twenty-five thousand dollars from the Historic Reserve Fund for the restoration of the windows and the red brick building. Okay, so it looks like there's no, no discussion. Let's vote. All those in favor of motion two under this article, please raise your card. Any opposed? Looks like motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. So now we are on to the third motion under this article. On behalf of Mr. Ascalillo, I move motion three under Article Seven as printed in the motions handout. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, Mr. Ascalillo. I'm sorry, yes, you're speaking to this one? I'm sorry, was Angie or?
Lee Tatiestev, Oak Knoll Road, Chair of the Carlisle Conservation Commission. And I have a statement to read for, on behalf of ENG and the commission. The Conservation Commission is applying to the state for a one million dollar grant from the Massachusetts Dam Levy and Seawall Repair and Removal Program to repair the failed spillway and associated site work of Greeno Dam. The town needs to provide at least twenty-five percent of the award to be eligible. The CPA request is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to qualify for the grant. If the grant is not awarded, the amount will be returned to the CPA fund. In spring of last year, Carlisle received four quotes ranging from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand to complete this repair, plus engineering services and updated costs. The town is looking to secure the twenty-five percent match, so we're financially prepared should we receive the grant. The dam is a nearly hundred-year-old, three-hundred-foot-long earthen structure with two concrete spillways. In the year two thousand, yes, twenty years ago, the Office of Dam Safety determined that the dam was in fair-to-poor condition with the two spillways providing inadequate water flow. The ConsCom undertook some of those recommendations and performed studies, design and engineering, and tree removal. The dam continues to deteriorate, and water occasionally overtops the dam, causing erosion. Spillway one is now broken. Carlisle can expect dam failure in the not-too-distant future. The project includes installation of a permanent cofferdam on the pond side of spillway one, farthest from the Greeno Barn, replacement of spillway one with multiple box culverts to improve discharge capacity, a new deck on spillway two, clearing, grading, loaming, and seeding, and construction of two wetland replication areas. Carlisle has all the required permits. The dam is located in Carlisle's largest town-owned conservation land, the two-hundred-and-forty-two-acre Greeno Land, which is part of a seven-hundred-and-forty-two-acre conserved area leading through the Great Meadows Wildlife Refuge to Foss Farm. The dam impounds the twenty-one-acre Greeno Pond, the largest pond in Carlisle, which is fed by Page's Brook and discharges to the Concord River. The pond provides important wildlife habitat and recreational opportunities. The dam's structure is a critical year-round link in the Carlisle Trail System, linking Greeno Land to the protected public land to the south. Without the dam in place, trail users will need to walk along Maple Street to access other trailheads. To replace the trail connection without the dam, an expensive bridge would need to be constructed over federally-protected land. On a side note, I think everyone here, if you drive on Maple Street on a sunny weekend day, it's mobbed because people are on the Greeno Trails. The purpose of this project is to prevent these adverse impacts. Complete failure of the dam in spillway one would be a catastrophic loss of the pond and result in an unknown amount of silt washed downstream, causing significant environmental damage. Cleanup costs in such a sensitive and difficult area to access would be expensive. Reconstruction of the dam, even if possible, would likely require a redesign and repair permitting. The pond is significant for protection of many species of wildlife and two state-listed rare species. Loss of the pond would essentially eliminate the aquatic habitat, which supports several fish, birds, and other species. In addition, Greeno Pond has been part of the state-sponsored Massachusetts Fish and Wildlife Wood and Duck Study Program for more than forty years. Greeno Pond is also considered to be an historic landscape by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. The ConsCom is actively seeking public grant programs that will support the repair, and we hope that by securing this twenty-five percent match, our application will be complete and hopefully funded by the Commonwealth.
Thank you. And this motion was unanimously supported by the Conservation Commission? Yes. And Board of Selectmen unanimously supported by a vote of five to zero, as did FinCom. So now I will just ask Mr. Dar to explain FinCom's exception to its usual practice.
We'll never do that again.
I didn't mean to punish you, sorry.
As you've just heard, you know, these, our sense is that the Greeno Dam represents a major liability for the town, and this is a way to help solve that for the future. So we, we did make an exception.
Okay, thank you. I, I should, I should also point, point out, this is perhaps a little bit of an arcane aspect of, of town government, but, but really, the Finance Committee is acting on your behalf. The Finance Committee is really responsible, and even though it's appointed in Carlisle by the Board of Selectmen, really, the, the function under Massachusetts State System of, of town government is really, the Finance Committee is the watchdog on behalf of town meeting as a legislative body. And so that's why they pay attention to what their scope and jurisdiction appropriately Any, any other town boards or committees have a recommendation on this motion? Do we have any debate or questions about this motion? Okay, seeing none, now let's take the vote. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. On behalf of Mr. Ascalillo, who's been very busy today, I move Article Eight as printed in the warrant and motions handout. Is there a second? Okay, motion eight is the funding for the cranberry bog maintenance project, five thousand dollars, I should have mentioned that before. I recognize Mr. Para to speak to the article.
Good morning, my name is Alex Para, thirty-one Bellis Hill Road. I'm a member of the Cranberry Bog Working Group and also of the Conservation Commission. Purpose of this article is to fund the employment of a wetland scientist to prepare a low-cost maintenance plan for the cranberry bog as an alternative to be presented to the town for the future of the bog. I think the principal thing that needs to be understood about the bog is that it is regulated wetlands under the State Wetlands Protection Act. And there's only a few things that you are permitted to do in the wetlands. One of them is to do nothing. And that alternative has been considered by the bog committee and by the Conservation Commission. And the difficulty with doing nothing is that the, the abandonment of the bog will lead to the loss of the open vistas that a recent survey we performed showed is very important to the town, overwhelmingly identified as one of the characteristics that the town likes about the bog. The second alternative is commercial agriculture. I think it's well-known at this point that cranberry cultivation is economically no longer viable on the bog. And the committee has considered alternative forms of commercial agriculture, primarily conversion of the bog to pay the cost estimates for doing that to the town. Ranged between three hundred and seventy thousand and five hundred thousand dollars with no guarantee that, that agriculture will continue to be viable on the bog over the long term. So this alternative that we would like to be able to present to the town and for consideration by the Conservation Commission is the third thing that you're allowed to do under the Wetlands Protection Act, which is called an ecological restoration project. And that essentially, under the definition of the act, is a, a project that would enhance the habitat value of the cranberry bog. And we believe, after consulting with volunteer bases with two well-respected wetland scientists, that a program could be devised that would permit maintenance of the open vistas at a low cost, somewhere in the region of what we spend annually on the maintenance of the bog now, which is about twelve thousand dollars. So we want to employ a wetland scientist to prepare a plan that we can present as a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission and then to the town as an alternative for the future of the bog. Thank you.
Thank you. Article Eight is unanimously supported by the Conservation Commission, do I have that correct? As well as FinCom and Selectmen also are unanimous. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Okay. Any questions or debate on Article Eight? Sorry, do we see someone over, okay, I'm sorry. Over here in the center. Dana Smith, one fifty-eight Martin Street. I'm curious as to how this approach affects the protection of the water rights that I used to think was related to commercial farming of some sort being necessary. Thank you. Mr. Para, if you could address that? Okay, certainly.
Ken Bellis, one twelve Johnson Road, I'm a member of the Conservation Commission and also the Cranberry Bog Working Group. The water rights are a little bit complicated. The town has registered rights of the equivalent of a hundred thousand gallons per day, and that's sort of over the course of a year. And those rights are retained so long that water is put to use. And if the town has cranberries in production, then the town is entitled to three hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day over the course of the year. Once the cranberry bog production is gone, then the rights to those three hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day are, are, are no longer rights to us. But we can retain a hundred thousand gallons per day should we need that water. And the wetland scientist project would include whether or not water would be needed to sustain the property in a natural state.
Any, any further questions on that? Actually, I, I have a further question, if you could just elucidate, Mr. Bell. So if I heard you correctly, the, the usage pertains to maintaining the ecological state of the bog, but usage would not, that implies it does not address questions of whether the groundwater and well-water the town residents. Is that, am I hearing that correctly? Or is that ambiguous under the law?
If the town were to propose a project to extract water for use, that a hundred thousand gallons per day could be applied toward that use. The rights are for withdrawing water. And if one's not withdrawing water, then one's not exercising that right.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anything else on Article Eight? Okay, so we're ready to move to a vote. All those in favor of Article Eight, which is five thousand dollars for the cranberry bog study, please raise your card. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article Nine. On behalf of Barney Arnold, I move Article Nine as printed in the warrant and motions handout. Is there a second? Article Nine is a motion to, is an article that would amend the Carlisle general bylaws to change the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. Ms. Arnold, I recognize you to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Barney Arnold at two-two-five Lowell Street. This article, as well as the following one, would change any and all of the references to the term "Selectmen" in either the general or the zoning bylaws to the general, gender-neutral term "Select Board." More than eighty-five towns across the Commonwealth have made this change as of June twenty-twenty, including the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association changed their name to the Massachusetts Select Board Association. And as you know, I'm sure you all agree that Carlisle's always been a town that has been very welcoming and inclusive, and this is just one, I think, important signal that we believe in inclusivity and equality here in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Article Nine was unanimously supported by the, almost last time I will say, Board of Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Okay, any question or debate on Article Nine? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article Ten basically does the same thing as Article Nine, except it addresses specifically the zoning bylaws as opposed to the general bylaws. I move, on behalf of Barney Arnold, I move Article Ten as printed in the town warrant and motions handout. A motion has been seconded. Thank you. Barney, you didn't need to speak to this one either, did you? Ditto. Okay. You win the brevity award. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen unanimously voted in favor of this one as well. Recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Any debate? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your card. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article Eleven is an article to authorize the Select Board to take some actions to obtain easements along Lowell Street. On behalf of Kate Reed, I move Article Eleven, actually, no, I'm not going to move Article Eleven as printed in the warrant and motion handout because it says Board of Selectmen. So I move Article Eleven as printed in the motions handout, changing Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So motion seconded. Motion is seconded. And I would, actually, so I'll, I'll recognize Kate Reed to speak to this article.
Hi, I hope you all read the article in Mosquito, but if not, I'm going to read it to you because it really tells the story of this easement swap. There are twin easements between, of two strips of land designated to improve access to portions of two adjacent properties, the DPW and the, and of two adjacent properties, the DPW and the Ansera-Arnold land. The DPW is an irregularly shaped piece of land, and it has a big wetland right in the middle of it. And we thought we would, well, we know we need a new septic system, and we thought we would like to place the leaching field up on a higher piece of land in order to leave the lower piece that where we currently have all of our operations going more free to be able to be developed, because we're tight in that site. As it turned out, we found another place to put our septic, but it is still a good idea to go ahead with this easement. And I will tell you why. The Ansera-Arnold family is offering a permanent one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-foot-long by twenty-foot-wide easement on Area One on their property at two-twenty-five Lowell Street. The easement allows the town to run underground utilities such as septic system pipes, and the land may also be used for public walking and municipal vehicles with the access path not to exceed ten feet in width and must remain unpaved. The town is proposing to offer a permanent three-hundred-and-eighty-four-foot-long easement on Area Two on Town Lot twenty-six-zero. The width of the easement ranges from thirty to sixty feet, but the vehicle path across the DPW property must remain unpaved and no more than ten feet wide. Municipal vehicles may use the access, but public use is to be limited to foot, horseback, or bike use during daylight hours. A foot trail already exists in that area. The easements would connect with the trail system linking to the town's conit land and the town's Morse Road right-of-way.
Thank you. So Article eleven was supported by the Select Board. The vote was four to zero. I would note that Barney Arnold, as a member of the Select Board, but also connected with the transaction because she is one of the property owners at two-twenty-five Lowell Street, recused herself from the discussion and vote on that. Are there recommendations or votes from any other town boards or committees on this? Floor is open for debate or discussion? Any questions? Okay, let's move to the vote. All those in favor of Article eleven? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. Article twelve. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, was it not unanimous? Okay, my apologies. So I declare that the motion carries by a majority vote and passes. Yes. I would say two-thirds. Okay, my apology. So the third time, I hope, will be a charm. The motion carries by more than a two-thirds majority, and I so declare. Okay, Article twelve is a motion to amend the general bylaw to eliminate the Long-Term Capital Requirements Committee. So on behalf of Kate Reed, I move Article twelve as printed in the warrant and motion's handout. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Reed, would you please explain this one?
Sorry. Quite a few years ago, we came to you to amend the bylaw, to add the phrase "except for the Long-Term Capital Requirements Committee" under the bylaw three-point-ten, sorry, three-point-nine-point-two, which had the description of what the Finance Committee could do. A long time ago, it used to say, or in fact, still says, "The Finance Committee members cannot participate in any other committee that has anything to do with decisions about spending money." And then we added the phrase "except for the Long-Term Caps Committee." Really, what has happened over the years, and as you can see, in fact, even in today's proceedings, the Long-Term Caps have really shrunk into just a couple of items, that, you know, one-time purchases of something, and all the municipal facilities things has come into another committee. So the purpose of the Long-Term Caps Committee has been changing, and we felt that really it should be a subcommittee of the Finance Committee itself, which would then bring it back into line with what we had said originally when we were talking about the Finance Committee. They would no longer be on another committee that had something to do with spending money. And so we would eliminate the Long-Term Caps Committee. It would become a subcommittee of the Finance Committee, and then we would change our language back and remove the "except for the Long-Term Capital Requirements Committee" language.
Thank you. So this motion was unanimously supported by both the FinCom and the Select Board. Were there recommendations from any other town boards or committees, Mr. Triola? Actually, if you could just wait a second for the microphone? Thank you.
The Long-Term Capital Requirements Committee unanimously supports Article twelve.
Thank you. Vote themselves out of a job. Keep a job. Too bad George Fraser isn't around to object to this one. Okay. Any debate on this one? Okay, see none. I believe we are ready for a vote. All those in favor of motion twelve, the motion under Article twelve, please raise your card. Any opposed? Okay, this one carries unanimously, and I so declare. With that, we come to the end of the warrant, and I would entertain a motion to dissolve this special town meeting. Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, thank you all very much. Please try to just sort of keep your distance as you walk out, and please, everyone kind of go in that direction if you can.